We have a volunteer to do our prayer on tonight, so if we can stand.
Everyone bow your heads. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you and we praise you, Father God. We thank you for watching those last night, not letting any thives break out and any thieves break in, Father God. You woke us up this morning, you let us see another day. Father God, we answer with crown on our head with wisdom and knowledge where we can make good decisions for our city. Father, let us not forget to be kind to one another, show love to one another, like the book says. In the mighty name of your son, Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and ever and ever. Again, we wanna thank you all for being here this evening. I think there are some seats here closer to the front. Has everybody got a chance to sign? Okay. So we thank you all for being here this evening. We don't have our live stream here, but we are wanting to thank all my broadcasting. We are live on the radio on ninety-four point three FM and fourteen hundred AM. And again, we thank you all for being here. With that being said, Madam Clerk?
Michael Rice.
Here.
Alva Vartanian.
Here.
Vance Williamson.
Here.
Judy Ward.
Here.
Willie McGee.
Present.
Andre Ruck.
Here.
Paul Choate.
Here.
And Diane Hammond.
Here.
Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. You should have received those via email.
Motion to approve. Second.
Madam Clerk?
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Andre Ruck.
Aye.
Paul Choate.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Alva Vartanian.
Aye.
And Michael Rice.
Aye.
Next on our agenda is invoices for approval.
I'm able to pay the bills. Second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Michael Rice.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Alva Vartanian.
Aye.
Andre Ruck.
Aye.
Paul Choate.
Aye.
And Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Next on our agenda is unfinished business. We do not have any. Next we're up to- Okay, I had a question about that, and I may have misunderstood, and if I did, please forgive me, because I didn't get it put on the agenda. When we were discussing about the ordinance for the El Dorado Works Board, and forgive me for misunderstanding, I thought with all of the discussion that we were gonna go back and redo that or change some verbiage in there. Was that-
That was my understanding there.
Yeah, mine too. We left off with it. But we're gonna change some of it.
That was my understanding, and I-
The amendment's on the ordinance. She's asking if y'all want any more changes.
Right, and I thought that was the consensus after the discussion, that there were some other things that everybody said that they wanted to change, or that we were gonna go back and discuss it.
You did the first reading of that ordinance last time, and then it would be on second reading tonight, but she's saying she thought that you guys were gonna start over.
We didn't do first reading. We was in discussion mode.
Yeah, we did first reading.
We did. He read it all the way through.
So when we was in discussion mode, how did it proceed further when we stopped in discussion mode?
Well, it said a lengthy discussion followed. The proposed amendment would be placed on the next agenda for its second reading. And that's how we had left it. It will be on the second reading tonight. Then the discussion mode actually come with the third reading whenever-
That's not factual. We discussed the fact that we wanted to add some things to it and amend some other things, and everybody had some input with it. And everybody was supposed to, as all the men, were supposed to have an opportunity to put their input in that before they got sealed or cleared by. That's what we was at.
So you're- so, just so that I'm clear, because that was my understanding and my misunderstanding, obviously. So you're saying, Ms. Ward, that it has to go through all three readings before there's a discussion?
It should be.
Okay.
But, and that was not voted on to make changes. And so after it goes through the third reading, then that's when the discussion comes up, and if you want to go back and redo.
So we shouldn't have been discussing at all? Is that how that-
So we just-
But there was no vote. I mean, there was no vote to can this. It was, like the minute said, it was the proposed ordinance to be placed on the next agenda for its second reading.
That was my-
That's where we left it.
That was my question about the minutes, because I remembered asking Mr. Kinslow about what do we do from this point, and that was my understanding, is that he said that we didn't go any further, that some other changes had to be made. I just wanted to be clear, and that was my understanding, so.
So let's give a clarify with Ms. Ward. So do we supposed to wait till the third reading?
There's a journey when you do it, yeah.
Okay.
So someone can make a change to the amendment and read it one, two, and three times on the third one, and telling me that that's one discussion. That's what y'all telling me, that's protocol.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So there should have, and that's what I was trying to understand, so there should have been no discussion?
So if we make a motion, if we make a motion and then someone has discussion and we don't get past the discussion, how do we proceed further? Because there was a motion right to add that amendment to it, correct? We weren't just-
No, I just read it for first reading. I read it the whole ordinance first time, last time, and it was to be put on second reading by title only this time.
I think you're getting confused, because normally y'all have been putting all three readings on the same night.
Right, and that's what I'm saying.
And so you have to make a motion to put on the second reading. But you guys decided to do it over three meetings, so he just did the first reading.
No, I'm talking about how can we change an amendment without all of our discussion and something goes forward, is what I'm saying. We've never all discussed this. How are we going forward with something that y'all got together and discussed? How does that become law? Because y'all just said that. It wasn't in the ordinance. Y'all just putting in the ordinance. So how does that become law? Just because y'all just put it in the ordinance without all of our opinions and perspectives on it? That's, I mean, that's dishonoring every one of our opinions up here and perspective, and to my, in my opinion. I mean, I never got to say my input. Mr. McGee never got to speak his input. All of a sudden, y'all just bring this type of verbiage and this language into the room and say we're just gonna read it.
And maybe I'm the one, because the way I understood it, is when you put it on first, second, and third reading, you give not only people, not only time to wanna come and discuss it, you're standing about it, but you have the three reads so people can discuss it and give their input. That's the way I understood that.
Well, correct me, Mr. Kinslow, if I am wrong, but I think the procedure would have been to vote down that amendment that you read and start all over. Is that correct?
Yep.
Because it proceeded on. That did not happen.
Okay. I just wanted some understanding, and I didn't, that's why I was asking.
I guess my, um, Mayor, I guess my concern is, it wasn't in the contract language. It wasn't in the ordinance language. We get to a meeting now, and all of a sudden, they just add it to the language. I'm saying, I don't see that being proper protocol on just, any one of us could just add language to an ordinance without not even giving the other councilman opportunity to put their input in it, to see their perspective.
Well, I'm not sure who changed it or who wanted it changed.
That's my point, because I disagree with that additive.
All right, and ordinance, amending ordinance number eighteen fifty-nine.
The way I understand, excuse me, I'm sorry.
So at this point, this was the second reading, so there's, we just, okay. So should we not have any discussion since the discussion only changes anything after the third reading?
That's what I normally do, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. So we, so the next council meeting will be the third reading, and if there's any information or any discussion, any discussion, we'll get to that then. Okay, we'll move forward. I think there's some other information on that, too. New business. Francis Energy, Mr. Andy Mattson. How are you, sir?
It's working?
Okay, I think it is.
I'm well. Thank you for having me again, Mayor Smith, Creer, and the City Council, thank you for having me back. There are a few more members this time, so I will reintroduce myself. My name is Andy Mattson. I'm with Francis Energy. I am the Director of Project Development for Francis Energy. We're based out of the city of Tulsa, Oklahoma. And I'm coming here today to present some new materials, some new information, and a new lease to the city to place electric vehicle chargers in city-owned lots for the attraction of EV drivers into the city as that becomes more popular. So do you mind if I distribute some of this material?
I do not. Did you need some assistance?
Should be good if we can pass that. I have ten. And we will try to, we'll go through all of it and considerate and have a great time. Again, I've mentioned I've been here before. I was here in September. I was here in September as part of the team of Francis. My colleague is not here today, but a lot has changed since September. The state of Arkansas has, in, starting February first, began a grant program of just a little over a million dollars in funds that came from the Volkswagen class action lawsuit. It was a federal lawsuit. They're leasing those funds specifically for the funding of DC fast chargers, Level Three DC fast chargers for electric vehicles. Those projects are open to all across the state of Arkansas that qualify under that RFP that was put out by ADEQ. The funds are distributed by the Department of Environmental Quality. I don't have a copy of that in there. It is rather lengthy, and I didn't wanna kill too many more trees. But that has come into consideration. That is, so applications for that are due the last day of this month, on April thirtieth. There has also been a law passed into federal bill that is now NEVI funds, which are the National Electric Vehicle, the eye's gonna escape me, I'll move on, infrastructure funds. And those are part of the infrastructure bill that was passed by the federal government. That is going to be fifty-four million dollars to the state of Arkansas in the span of five years for electrification. There'll be eight million dollars in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Let's see here. We're also in communications with the states and state offices. The governor, his office, ADEQ, about plans going forward for the state. And the NEVI funds aren't really going to impact El Dorado at this moment. The first round of NEVI funds or federal funds are for corridors or main corridors along, in the state that are designated as alternate fuel vehicle corridors. What does that mean? It means that they are currently or have current plans to be able to support travel for electric vehicles. El Dorado does not sit within fifty miles of one of those corridors. So up from Texarkana to Jonesboro is the corridor, forty going across is a corridor, and then forty-nine from forty up to the, I believe it passes through Bentonville, but that is also a corridor. The VW funds also aren't able to be distributed to, they are, they wait against sites that are fifty miles or more away from those corridors. Now, the waiting is not insignificant, but you can submit sites that are outside those corridors. Our hope is that the state, we have seen a map for future plans, and the city of El Dorado is on the state's overall build-out. If you go past my presentation here, there are maps labeled one and two. Map one is the state of Oklahoma. This is a printout of a website called Plug Share. This is how most EV drivers make travel plans. They look for, these orange dots represent Level Three DC fast chargers. The state of Oklahoma, Francis, in twenty nineteen, built out a fifty-mile network in the state of Oklahoma. So you can travel through the state of Oklahoma every fifty miles. You can get a charge. That will charge a vehicle within forty-five minutes to a full charge. If you flip the page, it's the state of Arkansas. And there are currently seven chargers across the state that meet that criteria. We've been in communications with several folks, talked to a young man with Energy yesterday, and he lives in South Louisiana. When he has to come up to Little Rock offices, he has to go to Dallas and then up thirty to get to Little Rock. Can't come straight up here. He can't go through Mississippi, because Mississippi frankly is the same as Arkansas right now. I'm not doing this to tout Oklahoma, but I'm doing this to shed light on an issue that I believe the governor and the state has identified. We are hoping, and we are in talks, to try to convince the state to release another eight to ten million dollars within the next year to be able to build outside those corridors. How are we gonna do that? It's towns like El Dorado, Jonesboro, Monticello, that, well, Jonesboro's on one, I'm sorry, I meant safe high below. They're not located on corridors and won't get funding for several years, given the current federal and state plans. We're actively leasing in all those areas, and we have leases in a lot of those areas. We want to take those leases to the state, present those, and say, here's the need, here's the willingness to build out your network, and we can do it right now. I was, last time I presented here, there was a great story in the paper the following week, the El Dorado News Times. And it, I stated that you could not get an electric vehicle charge here in the city. That is false. You can go to Malone Ford. There is a Level Two charger at Malone Ford that you can charge your vehicle, electric vehicle at, given the compatible plugs. If you'll switch, there's a slide in here at the front. The chart of, it has a picture of a Ford F-150 Lightning and a Rivian pickup truck. Those are two models that will be coming out that we think EV adopters in the heartland will steer towards more than your Tesla Cybertrucks. I really have no, well, I'll keep Tesla out of this, but the chart below each truck is Level Two charging times based on a charger being below thirty-five kilowatts, which is what the kilowatt, the charger at Malone is capable of, thirty-five kilowatts an hour. So if you roll up in a Ford Lightning to Malone Ford and try to charge on that charger, and you come in at twenty percent, you'll be there for four hours to get to forty percent. Take you eight hours to get to sixty, twelve hours to get to eighty, and sixteen hours to get to forty percent. The Rivian, it's a little bit faster if a battery in charge, but it's the same scenario. The maps that I showed you earlier of Oklahoma and Arkansas are how people plan their travel, because they want to know that they can get a quick charge and not necessarily pass through, but if they're in an emergency, they're not stuck there for sixteen hours or eight hours. And right now, if you came through, stopped at Malone Ford, to get to Little Rock, the next fast charging site, you'd have to stay there for at least six hours in most vehicles. So what am I proposing? We presented leases last time. I know those were, there were a lot of questions on those leases, and we have changed our philosophy a little bit. What has changed in that lease? You will still see ten dollars a year for a lease term for the rental. That is upfront capital that we spend to lease the spaces. It's up to six chargers. That is dictated pretty much on demand charges from the local utility provider. We love Energy, but in the state of Oklahoma, the cost of distributing electricity, building lines, infrastructure, is a lot cheaper, and therefore, our demand charges are a lot cheaper. It's a lot tougher to distribute energy down here, and so demand charges are a little bit higher. Currently, and we haven't confirmed this, but the last demand charges we have from Energy are thirteen dollars a kilowatt. What does that mean? That means that when we put in chargers, the minimum is a hundred, or is a hundred and fifty kilowatt charger times two. That's three hundred kilowatts. So the moment two cars that pull a hundred and fifty kilowatts pull up to those chargers, it registers on the utility meter as three hundred kilowatts of draw. Then we start paying three hundred kilowatts times thirteen dollars every month. That is thirty-nine hundred dollars a month. That's forty-six thousand dollars a year just to operate those machines and distribute electricity. NEVI funds, when they are distributed, require six hundred kilowatts and four chargers. That doubles that amount. So as far as paying capital upfront in our lease terms, yes, Mr. Rock?
I just have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
And I don't want, and I don't know, I'm kind of trying to see where you're going with it.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to flow with you. We, you know, we wanna flow on, though, you know, even-
Yes, sir.
But you-
You have a full-
But I wanna definitely get an understanding with you. Are you guys for profit?
We are for profit, yes, sir.
So I know you just, you went through the whole spiel of showing all your causes and what it takes to supply the service, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you want us to let you know why the ten dollars was basically justified?
Yes, sir.
And I get it, you know what I'm saying, but, you know, what are the, what are the profits, though, like in other towns on stations like this? Because I know we wanna kind of move on, wanna get what your point is, but I know as a council, we kinda wanna move on as well, but go ahead.
So we now have built into this lease a five percent profit share, kick in from day one. But as I mentioned the first time I was here, and I'll reiterate, we don't tend to see profit, especially in small towns, for seven years. So in towns like Dallas or Scottsdale, you see over a twenty-year period with a five percent. We don't have this data because we're not active in Scottsdale. Dallas is another scenario, but you're looking in the fifty to sixty thousand dollars as, for that five percent. When you get into smaller towns, you're looking in the ten to twenty thousand dollars. But that's all dictated by the ability of the state to have an infrastructure that supports traffic. I know Energy and Standard Lithium are currently putting in a project that is with Salford. That project is Level Two chargers. I spoke with Dr. Wallace this week, and I'm going to be taking a tour or discussing that with him tomorrow morning. That still will not put El Dorado on the map. I know he mentioned that they potentially have Level Three fast charging planned for or plumbed in the future. I can't confirm that. But this lease will, there is no charging that is free charging to whoever uses it. Again, we went over the timed charging scenarios. The city will not see, from what he mentioned, a dime of the money that comes off of charging there. And you can make money off of selling the electricity to those chargers. We want to share and be partners with the city with this new lease form. There is a contingency at the end that is developing that we now put in. After three years, if we have not built two chargers on those two locations, the lease goes away. We, if we can't build it in three years, we either wanna renegotiate with you or let the project go. And that would be solely for lack of funding.
So it's just going down to the basics, fundamental. The bottom line is, you want our facility for three years, correctly, at ten dollars a rate.
The lease, when we build is a twenty-year, fifteen-year plus a five-year renewal lease. But if we don't build, yes, three years.
If you do not build.
Yes, sir. So I think it's no risk, because you never pay a dime. Your taxpayers never pay a dime. The city never pays money. We make up what the states or the federal government pays for. They cover about seventy-five percent of the cost. For two chargers, it's five hundred thousand dollars currently to install them. Francis and our investors, private investors, cover the remaining costs, which is typically around a hundred and twenty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. You never have to pay to upgrade the machines. You never have to pay to maintain the machines. They are kept on a twenty-four-seven continually monitored network. If something is wrong, you do not have to allocate any manpower to monitor or fix those stations. We will know about the issue within six hours, depending on the time of day, and we will fix it as quickly as we possibly can using contractors down there. Again, this is, this is the lease. We'd love to partner with the city. It covers the lot at Cedar and the lot at two hundred West Allen, which is the public lot that is right across the street from City Hall, and then the lot that is next to the amphitheater and that, where the Murphy House is. Are there any-
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, when you put these charging stations in, you're setting up to six, they're gonna say like at, on East Cedar.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, people plug them in, they walk off, they come back, they've been drinking Coke, coffee, or whatever.
Yes, ma'am.
There's always gonna be litter. Who's responsible for keeping this area clean?
That is, the responsibility of the city is it is a city lot, but we do put trashcans out there. We attempt to keep it as clean as possible, but we're not gonna be here maintaining that lot. It is still viewed as a city lot. The chargers, there are pictures of the chargers.
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah. All the VAR stations, if desired, have trashcans if they do not have them there currently. We do, if somebody comes up and vandalizes it, smashes it with a baseball bat, that's not on the city. We fix that. We try to keep our stations as clean and presentable as we possibly can, but we can't be here twenty-four-seven to monitor and clean litter. But we want people to visit and rate our sites high, because that's the only way we will make money and the city will make money.
Okay, but you're saying the bottom line is, it would be up to the city then to maintain, the trashcans are gonna have to be emptied, so that's gonna go to Public Works and that type of thing. So that really adds onto the city's budget as far as employees and man-hour.
That's, that is a good point.
So the city is taking on an expense to do this.
That is a good point, yes, ma'am. And-
Your company's not the only company that provides a service for cities, is it, especially in this area or in Tulsa?
Um, no, it's not. We're the fourth largest company, uh, network, but we do have peers in our space, yes, sir.
And I guess Ms. Ward's bringing up a good point, just like gas stations, and gas stations have tenants that clean out the trash, and you would expect us to clean out the trash. And this contract really doesn't say too much about you keeping your area clean. It's just coming in and setting up the chargers for customers to come through, and you guys would be reaping the profits off of that? And then twenty years, we'd be lucky to get ten thousand dollars? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. At no cost to you. Plus, you get the visibility of the fastest-growing vehicle market in the country.
Well, our hopes are to keep the city beautiful and clean, and these areas that you're talking about are main public drive-ins. And doing that would probably need a little more commitment on your end. And if we're gonna fork out the money to Public Works and keep it clean, I just, I don't know. I don't see it.
And that can be discussed. That's not a off-the-table issue. Yes, Mr. Rice?
I don't know. Maybe I missed the email. Was this information-
Was this information provided to us before the city council meeting?
It was, it was not, sir.
Okay. That's a lot of reading and especially a contract.
Yes, sir.
And from what you're telling me, this is nothing that we need to act on today?
No, sir.
We've been going twenty-five minutes.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think Alderman Rucks had said several times, let's get to the nuts and bolts of it.
Yes, sir.
But now there's a contract we have to read? I would suggest letting us have this information.
Yes, sir.
We can table this. Let us get all the information and we can come back and then be able to ask you questions directly.
Got it.
But this would have been something perfect for us to have ahead of time. We could have probably accomplished more tonight. I don't know if y'all agree with me or don't.
I, I don't think he was expecting to make a decision tonight, he just wanted to present it.
Yes. We, we presented contracts similar the, the last time and those were given to everyone in the room, but we wanted to present this new opportunity.
Thank you.
So now with the questions, we can table for another time.
I think you've given us a lot to mull over.
Thank you.
I do appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time again.
Thank you. Very appropriately, next on our agenda is Entergy, Mr. Watson. I know you want to talk about a little different kind of energy, but.
Appreciate the opportunity. Uh, you know, just over a year ago, we, we came and talked about the solar energy purchase option. Entergy was offering to a lot of nonprofit entities such as, you know, municipalities such as El Dorado and got to give Mayor Carrera very, uh, very good props. So when we first off, offered this, and we call it Stepo Beam, solar energy purchase option B, we knew there was going to be a very, uh, short window to take advantage and subscribe to that. Uh, so we were telling everybody, hey, be ready and at eight o'clock on this day, be ready to sign up for it. Uh, a lot of people signed up at eight oh five and they didn't get any. So, uh, but, but Mayor signed up at eight o'clock on the dot, she got in, uh, and over the past year, the city has saved right at thirteen thousand dollars on their electric, uh, price.
Good job.
So we just wanted to bring that to you.
Thank you.
Um, and you continue to do that, so that's, that contract is in place, you know, for here forward, so just wanted to bring that good news to you, um, so you can, you can see what that has done for the city. Uh, and it, it's, it's around right at three hundred kilowatts is what you're subscribed for, for each year, um, so, uh, so it's working well. Yes, sir.
Where are the solar panels?
Solar panels on the eastern side of Arkansas. So we have some, uh, near Stuttgart, have some in Chico, uh, we're building one, uh, in Cersei, Walnut Bend, uh, we have some more coming on around, uh, um, oh, there, I'm drawing a blank on the last location, but we're, we're continuing to build solar panels, solar fields on the, on the eastern side of the state. That's where, uh, we have a, a lot of sunshine, not the pine trees that we have down here in, in south central, so, uh, it's wide open farmland that's relatively inexpensive and, uh, and people are willing to, um, to allow us to use that land for those solar panels. So anyway, so just wanted to bring that news to you. I know we had talked about what the savings would look like and, uh, so just wanted to have that for you. Are there any questions on that? No? All right. Well, if so, just, just let me know, but, but good job and well done on, on doing.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, amendment number one to economic incentive in the city of El Dorado. I believe Mr. Luther had a guess that was going to go over this with us. They're talking Entergy, I think. Okay. Come on.
Good evening.
Good evening. If you'll just give us your name and.
I'm Hunter Hotower with Resolute El Dorado, and we're asking for an extension, um, for the natural gas pipeline, since we're near the end of the term. It was a five-year, five-year term initially agreed upon with Union County Lumber Company or Conifex, and we're asking for a six-month extension so that we can, um.
What's the extension for?
To allow us time to, for, to secure a long-term solution for the ownership of the pipeline.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic? I can hear that last part. What was the?
Allow us time to secure a long-term solution for the ownership of the pipeline.
What, what are the terms of the relationship right now?
How that follows with internal acreage.
I believe it was Resolute was maintaining the pipeline for the five-year term, is that correct?
Conifex formally and now.
Right away.
Yes, sir.
Right.
So ultimately, it would be time for us to turn it over to you, but you're asking for an extension.
Correct.
Of about six months before you take over that ownership.
Correct.
Has the city reached out to, uh, has Mr. Evans spoken to you about this?
I thought Mr. Evans and I had a discussion about this at some point, maybe I'm mistaken, I don't know.
We did, and, uh, I think we're still negotiating how that's going to look like, what that's going to look like.
So we're just getting the extension to kind of work out the details?
They feel more comfortable if they had a extension of the current lease so we could get these things over.
So that's, that's something that you agree with?
We don't have anything.
I'm going to, uh, agree to the six-month.
Second. Second, man.
Okay. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Paul Choats.
Hi.
Judy Ward.
Hi.
Abba Vartanian.
Hi.
Willie McGee.
Hi.
Diane Hammond.
Hi.
Michael Rice.
Hi.
Vance Williamson.
Hi.
And Andre Ruck.
Hi.
I want to say it was painless, but it looked like maybe not. All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is the easement request. Dr. Vora?
I don't think he's here tonight.
Okay.
Uh, where we're at is Robert provided me with a survey that has a legal description of the street, and I have provided it to the real estate agents involved in the transaction and, and they're going to supposedly draft up something for us to look at, whether it be a permanent easement or a quitclaim deed, because we will have to have that, something permanent before we work on it.
Okay.
We, we working on the, uh, estimate on what it would cost to redo the street, so.
That's what he's.
And do we have numbers to, not yet?
Right. But, Mr. Evans, do you have an estimate yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
My understanding, there was a bit of urgency.
Dr. Vora, do you have a timeline on this?
He's, he's been moved by a couple of times, like the room closing, Marsh, it was closing this month, but he's got it yet.
But I think they're waiting for the, uh.
Now, maybe.
Easement before they close, because they need that.
I'm sorry.
They, they need the easement before they close, I believe.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why I was saying, I thought there was a bit of urgency. I remembered seeing something like April thirtieth.
Right, right.
On there, so, well, we'll do what we can. Next on our agenda, as a permanent fixture on our agenda, purchase request, Chief Hickman.
I'll need to be on the next one, too. Go ahead, break it off. Uh, I want to do this quick. Uh, request and authorization for two thousand one hundred and forty-one dollar, uh, purchase. It will come out of the Drug Control Fund, um, which is seized money through the action of the narcotic division for shelving, uh, to help us to maximize some much-needed space in our, uh, evidence vault.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Abba Vartanian.
Hi.
Andre Ruck.
Hi.
Paul Choats.
Hi.
Vance Williamson.
Hi.
Michael Rice.
Hi.
Willie McGee.
Hi.
Judy Ward.
Hi.
And Diane Hammond.
Hi.
Initially, it was a joke that I would put the chief on the agenda every single meeting and since then, he's needed to be on the agenda every single meeting. That's it.
I'm just wondering why it's taking him so long to get that done.
I do appreciate everything you're doing though, chief. As you all are signing, we'll just move on to the next thing. Uh, thank you, gentlemen, for being here. I do want to say for those of you who are standing, I do believe there is some seating if you want to come closer to the front, or if you don't mind standing. Uh, next we have, uh, citizens' concerns, and I do not see Pastor Van Hook, but she had a concern about the animal, is she here? Oh, I'm so, I'm so sorry. Uh, your concern, do you, my coming, I know your concern was about the animal control. So if you, if you'll come.
I'm here today.
I think it is, um, it's, yeah.
Maybe I talk so low. Okay, but I'm here today, uh, and to the city council, to the mayor, to the city council. I'm here to speak about the animal control or non-control in Ward One. We have dogs and I've called, several people in the neighborhood have called animal control and they can't do anything. He can't do anything except he goes to district court, except he, um, passes out a citation. And so I was under the impression maybe that an ordinance could be changed, maybe the dogs could be picked up, then go to district court to get their dogs back. I, I don't know how that would go, but there has to be some kind of animal control. We have rock wilders, we have pit bulls, they roam, they roam the neighborhood and we need somebody or some other help with our animal control department in order to get these dogs off the street. So that's mine.
That guy needs to be held to some accountability and for some reason he have a, um, I, I, I just don't understand it. I don't understand it. We get so many complaints, we do, uh, Mr. Rucks and myself and others, and it seems to just follow on deaf ears. And to me, I have so many people calling and saying, um, they can't get him, uh, he take his dog, they don't return the dog when they go, and I, I just don't, this guy just run them up. But he seemed to have a protective shield in front of him, and I don't know why we allowed, because we pay this guy, he's supposed to patrol these streets five days a week in a, in a vehicle that we can actually recognize him in. No one seemed to hold him accountable for that, and it just seemed to be run them up. And he seemed to just, do we, what, I just talked about this last month, and something needs to be done. Either we need to, to bid it out to see if we can get more bang for our buck, or we need to bring it in-house and, and put it on our own staff. Our two employees, get them trained, and we would have twenty-four hours, seven days a week service. That's what I think we need to do. Now, I don't know about other folks up here, I don't know why this guy seemed to have a, a gold spoon in his mouth, but I'm just sick of it. I'm sick of it.
I know your, your suggestion, I'm not sure how or if the council would be able to, to change any ordinance. I know that once they go to court, that's a, a different situation about what you're suggesting that they be picked up and that the individuals have to go to court. I don't know if that's anything that, that I would, I would ask you, Mr. Kinslow, I don't even know if that's anything that the council would have.
If you'll stay, I'll talk to you afterward because I just, uh, drafted an ordinance for a real small town, it was eight pages long.
Okay. It just appears that it's always a circle. You always go in a circle whenever you're trying to get some things done in the city. It goes from one person to the next person to the next person and then you're right back where you started, so.
Has anybody ever addressed the problem to him? Has he ever been in front of us to address problems or anybody talked to him about his problems and?
He don't even come with requests. Uh, he have, he have, he have a line of protectors that actually let him run them up, and I don't care if nobody get offended and whatever, but we, we, we are not doing our citizens justice for letting this guy run loose in our community. For years, for years, he have been smart enough to actually stay on the good side of those who actually keep him making money, city money, taxpayer dollar money, that everybody not benefiting from and even taking advantage of our citizens. And, and we ought to be shamed, we ought to be ashamed. For us allowing that to go on.
Just a while back on a Saturday, I got about six phone calls about one dollar from neighbors that had called the police, tried to get ahold of animal control, tried to get ahold of, got ahold of me, and it was the same thing. He doesn't work on weekends. Um, the police don't have any way, and they're not trained to, to fool with dogs. I mean, it's not their job, there are very few of them on control at one time, and I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm not able to fix a vicious dog. I do think we need to look at, uh, on weekends, you know, you have a dog running in the neighborhood of, for forty-eight hours or could even be longer, get out on a Friday night and you got till Monday morning. That's a long time where people feel very scared or uneasy being in their neighborhood or being around their house. Um, you know, I think there needs to be something done with call for service, um, and the last one was just a, a month or two ago, but it's happened several times. I know I was in Jackson one Saturday, while back, same thing. Uh, people call us wanting to know what to do, and, you know, I think there needs to be a call for service. Chief, is there a weekend call out for the animal control?
There should be.
Okay.
To get the sponsors out and, you know, uh, privy.
Could you please check on that for me?
Typically, when we used to, when I was still in control, when we contacted, they would come out. But you're right, when they have, you have a visiting dog, our really only training and response is to spatter the dog, and that's something you don't want to do if you have an option. And I know in the past, there's times when he's helped avoid that.
Will you, uh, will you check on that for me?
Well, ultimately, Public Works is the department that the dog catcher falls under. So when you say people are calling you all, that's who they should be calling if they can't get the animal control. So if, if they're calling you or even if they're calling me, we don't have the capability to, to go out. That's not even our responsibility. So to keep passing the bucket, it goes back to what Ms. Van Hook has said, you're going around in circles. So we have an issue that seems like it's not being addressed or it can't be addressed, and her biggest complaint here is that, well, she's been told from the animal control person is that ultimately there's nothing he can do. You know, he, he goes to court and if nothing happens, nothing happens. So I think her ultimate thing is regardless as to who's being called, called, nothing is getting done. So if that is a legality.
But, but you know, you can do something.
Well.
If you pay him, if you pay him, we already paid him.
I, I get that. I get that.
I've got citizens having to pay fifty and eighty-five dollars for something that we already paying him for.
Hey, maybe when the contract comes up for renewal, change the wording in it and.
It never comes up for renewal.
We talked about the contract before, it hasn't, it hasn't changed. So ultimately, are you saying, now you say if you pay him, now we pay, the city pays him, are you saying citizens pay him as well?
Yes, yes, they, I have people tell me, she said he come out, he paid his fee, his come-out fee. I don't know where, why he got the, where the come-out fee come from? This guy don't even patrol our city.
I, I didn't know, I'm, I'm.
We already paid him seventy thousand.
Mayor, he got, we just, I'm just looking at his name right here, Union County Animal Control, Animal Control for the month of April, five thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars he billed us for.
Now, that's his monthly?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
No, I'm just letting you know, every, every thirty days, he's getting five thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars.
And that's more, so some of that money go for his staff. So if he can't come out, look like it's bad for the baby to come out.
I asked him about help, he told me he didn't have any.
Yeah, he didn't.
So.
That's not.
I, I'm not sure what to do.
But ultimately, if, um, I don't know, this is a, the council needs to get together and, and maybe with Mr. Kinslow to figure out how we move forward, whether it's another contract or bidding it out. I, I do apologize on behalf of the fact that nothing has been done.
My main concern is that there are a lot of children in that neighborhood, and I've seen dogs run after children. On several occasions, I have, happened to be at the church and had to open the door, uh, for some kids to come in.
Right.
Running from the dogs.
Mr. Kinslow to figure out how we move forward, whether it's another contract or bidding it out. I, I do apologize on behalf of the fact that nothing has been done.
My main concern is that there are a lot of children in that neighborhood. And I've seen dogs run after children on several occasions. I have, happened to be at the church and had to open the door, uh, for some kids to come in, running from the dogs.
My, my thing is.
I hate to say it, but the buck stops with us if we employ him, and we should provide a better.
And you shouldn't hate to say it, that's the truth.
Right, you ought to go back in, in our meetings and, and in, 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 in our minutes and see how many times we have discussed this guy. And he seems to skate right out the door. Now, I, I don't know what, what we, I, I haven't been up here so long, it might be running together. But I've had cer- certain council members talk about how they're ashamed of us overspending or missing paying a bill. But we literally throw seventy thousand dollars to a guy who just know how to manipulate the system, who to work and who to, to snuggle up to. And that's just real talk. Now, if you want that guy to be that guy, you hire him, let him work for you. But we need somebody who can work for our citizens. I'm talking about everybody, not just certain people who I'm friends of, I'm talking about everybody.
Mr. Cho.
Mr. Adams. When's that contract come up for review?
You got thirty days, you can, you can give him a thirty day notice at any, any moment.
And I will reiterate the fact that as far, I don't know when the last time his contract has been signed. I've never signed a contract for him.
I think it was five years and it evergreened every year for sixty months. Uh, what can, what can do a RFP, um, first year?
If you read the contract, it said we can actually give him a thirty day notice at any, any time during the year. We can literally give him a thirty day notice. If he not doing it, if somebody else in this city wasn't doing their job, we would fine him on the spot. Last dog catcher worked seven days a week, weekends twenty-four hours seven, he was on call every day. He got fired because he did six thousand dollars worth of overtime that it was signed off on, he got fired. This guy making seventy thousand dollars free money and he just running them up. Nobody seen him, nobody see where he patrols, nobody know what kind of vehicle that has a dog catcher on it, nothing.
So with, with all of that being said, and.
Let me, can I finish, please?
Oh, I, I didn't know you weren't finished.
I wasn't, no, I was not.
Okay.
Okay.
You gotta go quicker than that.
May I sit down?
You may.
Okay, I recognize the fact that we have a perceived problem. I think it's time, Mr. Adams, to put our current dog catcher on notice. Tell him without question by July one, we will have his contract out for bid. And let's see if we can, you know, let, let's, don't, let's don't stop one thing before we have a solution to replace it, okay? That's bottom line. We don't want to sit out there without anything, without any help. It's just poor planning when you cut your nose off to spite your face. So let's, let's move forward. Let's put this thing out for, do your RFP, give him notice that it's gonna happen, and then let's move forward.
Mayor, can I say something before you move on? I'm, I'm gonna wrap this, I'm gonna say this last little bit.
Okay.
I'm, I, as, as a city alderman, I'm, I'm, I'm looking around at our city and I'm, I'm very concerned about, from the big picture perspective. I believe in our brand, I'm trying to see who, Eldorado Arkansas, what is our brand? Who are we, I asked Arvo the other day about his mission, our Eldorado's mission statement. And I thought about that when I left home, like who are we and who are we as Eldoradians? What do we stand for? What are our principles moving forward? What are we, what are we trying to accomplish as, as a group of Eldoradians, as a group of leaders? And I, and I was very concerned about just looking at, just looking at the money and thinking about, just talking about the dog catcher. And we, and, and we always talking about being fiscally and, and financially responsible for the taxpayer's money and, and as well as we should. But I'm gonna tell you, when, when I hear about our citizens saying that our dog catcher is not being up to par, I look at the big picture saying, hey, that's our citizens, our customers. You have to look at the citizens like customers. We have to serve their needs because they're the ones going in the stores, paying the taxes. And they're the ones, uh, who are making things turn around, is putting money into the, our, our, our departments, the police department, the, the, the fire department. These are, these are programs that, that, that's being trickled through our tax dollars. That, that, these are needs and those, that, our tax dollars are actually going for the dog and making sure that our citizens feel safe from humans. But I'm just, I'm looking at the big picture, not just the dogs, our, our trash department, our fire, our fire department being on time, our police department solving issues. I'm talking about everything that makes us who we are and what the brand we want us to represent. And I take stuff like that serious when one of our constituents come up here and say, hey, I felt unsafe, we got rock wilders. And I'm thinking about them going to other people towns. Now, don't come near the radar girl, we don't, they, they might have rock wilders and. I'm thinking about that branding, that, that, that they go off in other towns and speak about who we are and what we represent. So I'm just asking y'all, as we as leaders and we as people who work for the city of Eldorado, let's take serving these, our people serious because we down to seventeen thousand people. They're gonna keep leaving us and going to cities that's serving them and taking care of their needs. And we're not even looking at, we so built about our own little pie that we can't even see that we're crumbling. Because we're not serving the people that's putting the money into the taxes, that's paying the actual salaries of these, these, these programs. So that's all I'm saying to y'all's concern, guys. Let's, we need to be trying to solve issues for the people that live here. And that's all we're around, and that goes for just making sure that these people who are billing us, uh, who's holding them accountable that they're billing us properly? I don't, I don't even know if they even charging us properly, they could be quadrupling us. We don't, what's our accountability system? And we talking about being responsible, I'm just saying that, we just gotta step our game up and move this city forward. That's all I'm saying, Mayor, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I appreciate that.
Well, you, you're not on the agenda, can you see us after the, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, next is under Citizens Concerned, I'm sorry.
So, Mayor, what are we, what are we gonna do? I, I, I wanna make it clear, I heard Mr. Cho asked Mr. Edmonds to actually do something. I wanna make sure we all understand it. I understood that he asked Mr. Edmonds to tell the dog catcher that he's on notice. Is that correct?
That we will be placing that service out requesting proposals.
Cause this was.
Is that what you heard, Mr. Adams?
Cause this was discussed last year, so.
We discussed many years.
I know for, for sure last year, I know we talked about it for sure last year. So I hope we will move forward, cause as Mr. Vartanian said, the buck stops here. Next is under Citizens Concerned is the Eldorado Works Board and Mr. Horace Charles wanted to speak to that. It's under Citizens Concerned.
Okay, um, this goes back to when you were first talking, when you first started about that ordinance, eighteen fifty-nine? Okay, I'll make it short and sweet. The, your recommendation that you wanted to read was, the change was all members must be residents of Eldorado. When I did some research on it, the latest one being dated twenty nineteen, Title fourteen, Subtitle eight, it says verbatim, members are not required to be residents of the municipality or county that has created the public facilities board. That's in black and white, just like yours. So I'm making a proposal to change your wording, just add something to it, that's all. All members must be residents of Eldorado without city limit, limitations, period. And that settles it, okay? Now, what I see was wrong is that in getting stuff done from animal control to whatever, there's too much red tape, okay? I'm not used to red tape, I'm just used to getting stuff done if you agree with it, vote on it, and move on. Then you could be finished with eighteen fifty-nine without red tape. If the dog catcher work for me, see, I've talked to you before about how is the city task organized? The animal control person has a supervisor. Who is it? Okay? Call in the supervisor, see, if I was a commander, I'd call the supervisor into the carpet. What you gonna do about it? Let's get it done. Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next is the Eldorado Works Board Recommendations. Mr. Downham.
I, I just have to say this, I can't say this while you're coming.
Yeah, sure, come on, come on, don't stop, come on.
This, this is actually not about red tape, it's about who make the recommendation. That's how things get done up here. I've been up here a long time. And ain't about red tape, it's about who make the recommendation and who this person is connected to.
So we'll go on with the Eldorado Works Board Recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I do have one request. In future months, can I go earlier?
I was trying to put, no, I'm sorry, go ahead, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, thanks. My name is Greg Downham, I'm here on behalf of the Eldorado Works Board and we have two funding requests to present for your consideration tonight. And both are continuing projects that we have supported in the past. The first is a contract with the Union County Chamber of Commerce to provide economic development services to the city for twenty twenty-two. Historically, we funded them at an amount of forty-five thousand dollars. We did make one small modification to that last year due to some of the COVID financial impacts, but they ultimately did not need that extra fund, so we did not provide those. So they're back to their normal request of forty-five thousand dollars, paid quarterly, eleven thousand, two hundred fifty dollars per quarter to provide economic development services for the city. You'd previously been provided the packet that Mr. Luther shared with us. And just a couple of the highlights, about forty-two percent of their time is spent directly on economic development activities. And in twenty twenty-one, they had twenty-six ribbon cutting ceremonies for new or remodeled businesses. And so far this year, at least when he had made the presentation, they were up to eight for twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Madam Clerk. Willie McGee. Willie McGee. Michael Rice.
Uh.
Alba Vartanian.
Hi.
Andre Rux.
Hi.
Paul Choat.
Hi.
Vance Williamson.
Uh.
Judy Ward.
Uh.
And Diane Hammond.
Uh.
Can I just make, make this last little statement? Brother Luther, I, I know I've said it to you before, I'm gonna say it to you, I know you said you didn't really need it, but I just think you need to be asking for a little more. And the reason I ask you that is because I just want us to do a, a major marketing campaign on the city of Eldorado. I want us to get billboards out there, different towns, different cities, let people know the good things we got going in Eldorado because I'm just trying to stop this population decrease. And I would like to have some marketing in other cities from a full, full, our, our radius, from Memphis to Dallas to, uh, other street, just, just a recruiting and just outright let it, let people know what Eldorado got going on down here. And I just think we, with a little more money, we can get the word out about what we got going in Eldorado. So that's why I always say, I don't know what fifty thousand dollars can do when you talking about making jobs and creating businesses. I just don't know, but that's just me, but you know me, you always talk about that, but that's it, I'm sorry.
Well, I think it, it continuation of that, they, they have three primary funding sources, right? They get money from the county, they get money from the city, and they get money from the membership and events, so.
Right.
The proposal that he made and the financials that he provided.
Yes, sir.
They had surplus splash beer from their activities, so absolutely, if there's a need.
Yes, sir.
We should consider it.
Yes, sir.
The second request is once again a continuation of a request that we had made last year that this council approved. And that is a request from the Murphy Arts District with a contract for services to maintain the playscape. Last year, there were three aspects of the request, one was reimbursement for monopoly utility money. The second was purchase of Old Derek Park. And the third element of that request last year was for a contract for the playscape. Their original request was for a three-year term. Our Works Board then initially approved it, but the city council chose to just consider it one year at a time. So they came back to request second year funding. And they presented their results from twenty twenty-one, uh, in part because they were only open seven months, but also through, uh, some efforts to keep costs as low as possible. The four hundred thousand that we had previously approved, they only ended up spending three hundred thousand. So we have worked that under budget number into the request for this year. They project for twenty twenty-two, the funding and the operations of the playscape will be around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but they're only requesting three hundred to work off some of that excess that was provided to them last year to kind of get us back in balance. Anticipating that next year, if this is approved, they would also reduce their request by fifty thousand to kind of get the city back in balance on that. And I think I'm accurate in saying that this, once again, would be a part of the Murphy USA match that if, if the city council approves of three hundred, Murphy USA would also contribute three hundred thousand dollars into the Murphy Arts District as well to support that. A couple of the numbers, I think it's been sent to you, but, uh, last year, they had just under twenty thousand individuals that utilized the playscape. And so it's a free attraction that is used by all of our constituents, both within the town, all four wards, but also attracts out of town visitors. So I think it's been an asset to the community and the board's recommendation is that we fund it, uh, for another year. And if things continue to go well, we may be back next year as well.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Any other questions or anything? Madam Clerk. Judy Ward.
Uh.
Diane Hammond.
Uh.
Paul Choat.
Hi.
Vance Williamson. Alba Vartanian.
Hi.
Andre Rux.
Hi.
Willie McGee. And Michael Rice.
All right, now you're finished with that part. And the reason I put you here is so you could stay there and just, the next thing is boarding commission processes. And I was gonna let you go ahead and go first, so that you, yeah. That was a method to my madness.
So what format you wanna use, you wanna ask questions, you want me just to?
If you wanna do an overview and then if anyone has any questions. Uh, because I think one of the things that, that I share with you is that I'm not sure that everybody understands what, uh, the Eldorado Wor- Works Board will fund. So I think if that was clearer, that would kind of help with people coming to you all so they would know what you all would fund. And how do you vet out that process when people come to you?
Okay, so let's start with, uh, the ordinance and the tax, excuse me, is originally approved, had five elements of the tax. And I know for city council, this would be a repeat, but, uh, we'll work our way through it. There was a community development aspect, that was fifteen percent of the expected, of the, of the tax. And that really covers recreational things, sports, complexes, parks, things of that nature. There's actually six percent within that that's specifically designated for parks. The second element, I should have printed out something larger, uh, public works, which is thirty-two percent, which basically covers streets, city infrastructure, things like that. And if you recall, a couple of years ago, we set aside five million dollars to help accelerate the work that the public, public works department could do in addressing roads, which I believe that money was split evenly between the four, between, between the four wards. The third element is economic development, and I believe that's also fifteen percent. I apologize if I'm misquoting, Mr. Williamson probably remembers. But that's, that's where the money for the chamber comes out of, and that's really to help fund economic development activities, uh, for the city. The fourth element was festival city development, so that was the city's portion, and that was twelve percent. That was the city's portion to help with the downtown development, the Murphy Arts District. And then the fifth element is construction and maintenance and non-designated, which makes up about twenty-six percent. And those are improvements to municipal facilities and then kind of undesignated or other items that may come up that don't fit neatly within one of the other four categories. So that's broadly what the five categories of the tax are there to support. Talk a little bit about the process, uh, the normal process would be if someone wants to present something to our board, they would reach out to the chairman, which I apparently am, and just make a request to be on the agenda. As part of that request, it helps facilitate, like Mr. Rice said tonight, what helps facilitate a good discussion and productive meetings is to provide us a pre-read of what your request is gonna be, how it fits within one of those five buckets. And present that to us, we share it with the other Works Board members, share it with the media, share it with all the city council members, the mayor as well, so everybody has access to the same information that, that I'm giving by the requister. And we invite them to the meeting and then they make their presentation. We'll ask questions to make sure that, you know, it's, it's a good idea, that's improperly vetted, they've really thought through, done some analytics, make sure that it's sustainable, make sure that it fits within, you know, the stated intent of the tax. And we'll go through that process. The more prepared they are, the faster it goes. If they're not prepared, we'll, they may ask them to come back, or we may give them an answer that says we don't see how it fits within the tax. And that's decided at those meetings. And the request for us is that you get the, we meet nine days before the city council on a Tuesday, five fifteen, in the city chamber, in the chambers here. The request is to have your request to be on the agenda submitted by Friday before Tuesday. So we can have that, the members can have the weekend to kind of peruse the information and make sure that they're prepared with questions and anything they may need in order to make a decision, either, you know, a positive or negative decision on the request.
Did anybody else have any questions?
I have.
So I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little, I have a couple of questions. So my first question is, so for instance, the fifteen percent that goes toward the, um, the, um, the entrepreneurship, what is it? Not entrepreneurship, but it was, uh, economic development.
Right.
So how does that break down guidelines wise? Like what projects fit into that category if it's economic development? Because if it's creating jobs, if it's creating tax revenue for the city, what, what do y'all, what do y'all wanna see in, I mean, what constitutes validity in that area? That, that makes that, that qualifies them for to get those resources?
And before you answer that question, I'm, I'm just gonna piggyback off that a little bit. When people make requests, do you let them know if it's something that's gonna be viable to come before the board ahead of time? Kind of piggybacking off that. Cause everything I know doesn't fit, so do you let them know ahead of time? Because everything I know doesn't fit, so do you let them know ahead of time?
Occasionally.
Okay.
If someone makes a request and wants to meet with, intends to be in doubt and said, hey, this is a request that I have, we may have a conversation to see, how does this fit?
Okay.
And there's been very few people that we have not allowed to move forward in that process.
Right, okay.
There have been occasions when we'd already considered a proposal, and we did not reconsider it.
Okay.
But normally, everything gets before the board, and the full board make a decision on whether or not it's something that, that fits.
I wanna say something, but I'm not gonna say something, because I'm not really in a good mood right now, but.
Okay.
I know I had talked to you a couple of times by coming before y'all board, and I just felt like I got put off. You, you know what I'm saying? Because I know we had talked, and you had told me to wait the following meeting, which I did, and then it still happened, I was out of town trying to get back in town so I could tell you why I wanted to come before the board, and I got kind of, felt like I got blown off, and then you stated to me what you thought I should do, a program that's already proven, and it, it kind of bothered me for a minute, because I see other members come before the board and don't seem to have much problem, and this program that I was telling you about is a proven program. I mean, it's already a proven program, and it has a lot of benefits for this community. So I'm just concerned about that. I even talked to Mr. Edmonds about it, and he, he actually calmed me down a little bit, and I'm gonna thank him for that, because I, I was, I remember when we talked, I was doing yard work, you remember? And I might have been a little hot, a little frustrated, but it seems to, to me that some people can come before the board, and it's no problem, and everything goes smoothly, and then when other people try to come before the board, it seems to be maybe a different type of vetting process, and I think, I just wanna be able to submit my, my thought, my, my program.
And I apologize if you felt that I in any way was dismissive of your, of you during the conversation, because, and, because what my ask was, was, my ask slash challenge was, think, is there a way we could think bigger to have a more impactful program, if you recall? Is that accurate?
Yeah. And, and I understand that.
Yeah.
And I tried to explain that to you.
But just to be clear, I did not say you could not present to the Works Board, and we haven't, and we haven't had a meeting since you and I had that phone call, or at least not one that maybe you were in town for. But my request to you was, my suggestion was, can we think bigger and broader to do something that's more impactful for the community over the long term? That was my, that was my ask.
And, and this was, this was a long-term, this is already something that's been a very major impact on this community, because one of the things we got a problem with is trash. I mean, everybody in here would probably get a phone call about trash, and, and that's, and that's, that's a battle within itself.
Right.
Um, so I'm, I'm just saying, I felt like that.
Mm-hmm.
I, I can't tell you, I can't help it how the way I felt, but I'm gonna be honest with you today, I felt like that.
Well, I, and if, since you felt that way, I apologize, I did not intend to be dismissive of you in any way.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just, I just felt.
But you did, you just mentioned, and I appreciate that, you said that you are one voice, but you are the person that if somebody wants to be placed on the agenda, you are the person that they contact.
And, and we're always gonna err on the side of putting them on the agenda.
Okay.
And letting them make their presentation to the full board, unless it's something that squarely does not fit anywhere within the tax.
Right.
If it's blocking it very clear, then it's not, you know, something that we'd probably consider.
And for example, the playscape, uh, I think the playscape could do more down there. They could have a bench, they could do a family night, or kid night, or whatever, but did you share that with them? But we get our money out of town for a seasonal program.
We, we asked a lot of questions about the operations and how they could better manage costs. I think we had, I think this ribbon may, you know, I'm, she certainly appreciated and answered all the questions, but we certainly challenged the appropriateness of what was listed out on the budget, the expenses, how can we cut costs, how can we make sure that we're doing something that's also, you know, obviously free, but also safe for the community? And there will have to be some investments made down there to provide that, so.
I, 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 I just, yeah, I appreciate you.
I appreciate you explaining that and take time out.
I think.
That's my question.
Okay. I think it's important, and that's the reason why I wanted you to come and talk about the process, so that people know, because I'm sure there are other people who may not know that they can come to the El Dorado Works Board, and maybe sometimes people won't come because they're not sure, and I don't think anybody wants to come and be rejected, but sometimes you may have to come to.
That may be part of the process, but I'm happy to, and we've helped others, if they have questions about, well, what may help, and I can speak.
Right.
Again, for myself, this is what, things, some things that I would like to see.
Right.
Think about these questions, so you can come better prepared versus just showing up with a request.
And that was my point. So if they come, and you can, I mean, if they, if they request, you can let them know the information ahead of time, and I think it'll make it a lot more beneficial, because we do have money to.
We have money that we want to.
To go towards good projects.
Invest, and I think many presenters have come multiple times before they were able to cross the finish line.
Yeah.
May I, may I, I, I just have to say this last thing before, on this subject, and I wanna, uh, thank Brother Charles for coming up with that question, uh, about the amendment to the ordinance is to include, to, uh, to, uh, not allow the, any candidate to be outside of the city limits of El Dorado. That, that is the new verbiage that added to the contract. And then, and I wanna explain why I was such against that, and the reason being is because I'm a fair guy, and I believe that if you have a town that has, out of every hundred people, fifty-five of them are African-American, that they are the most majority of the popular, uh, of the city of El Dorado. And if you don't have not one of those individuals on that board, not one, to me, that breaks down the legitimacy of that board to me, because how are those individuals feel like that their voices can be heard, and their backgrounds, and their culture, and things that they wanna bring expressively to the city of El Dorado and want the city to back it? If you don't have anybody, anybody on that board who understands their background, their history, where they come from, never experienced them, but they wanna look at their programs and make a decision based on their own background? And if you got a board based on four to five white individuals, or even, they can't possibly relate to that demographic of the city. And so if we wanna really be fair, we, and, and Mr. Kinslow, I wanna know, why can I add, since someone else called you and said, let's add to the verbiage, and to the contract, not having the individual live outside of the city of El Dorado, why can I have that, that the board be more diverse, and I mean African-Americans? And, and I know we have a minority on there, and I know that, but I'm talking about African-Americans specifically. And the reason I specific, uh, being them specifically, because they're being left out, and they're fifty-five percent of the community, and their needs and what they want has to be heard and felt as well. And I'm just happy to be an African-American. If I was white, I would still be saying the same thing. We cannot leave out the majority of our community when it comes to the decisions we're making up here, when it comes to their, but to the participation of the, the enjoyment of this city. And we accumulate, we want them to go in these stores and pay all these taxes, but then when it comes to one, the things they wanna get done, none of the things that they want are being heard, because no one is on that board that looks like them. We gotta get off this mess and start coming together and do things that's righteous.
So are you recommending to leave a seat open just for that position, just for an African-American? Is that, that's what you're pretty much suggesting, right?
Because we, we had a young man.
To cut to the chase.
We had a young man, he, before, before, he brought his con, he brought his application in.
Right.
Although before the, this verbiage changed, this contract changed, he had already turned his application in. So what, what about those applications that was in before the change?
Well, that was a question that we'd asked, and I don't, I don't want, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Rux, and I definitely understand what you're saying too, uh, Mr. Vartanian. But we were talking, at this point, we were talking about the processes. And I do, I do understand, I understand what both of you are saying, but I think if we're gonna mention what, how the board is made up, the El Dorado Works Board has had African-American representation on it.
Yeah, we know right now.
I understand what you're saying, but we also have to understand that even with any type of representation on the board, people have to apply. So we have to, whatever's gonna happen with this ordinance, and I think that's what the discussion is. Whatever's gonna happen with the ordinance, however it's gonna be designed, however, whatever you all agree on, because that's ultimately what's gonna have to happen. You all are gonna have to agree. People have to apply, and then they have to be recommended to go on the board. So while I know that it's a good argument, right now, we were talking about the processes, and Mr. Downham was sharing what the process is. So I know that there is a vacancy, or two. Uh, Mr. Vartanian has created one, being on our council, and I know that we have someone that's trying to get off as soon as they can be replaced, but ultimately, people have to apply, and that is a request of the community, for everyone. So we have several boards, we have several boards, and none of them reflect our demographics. So people have to apply so that they can be appointed or recommended to the boards. I understand what you're saying, but I know we've been here for a while, and we have a couple of other people who wanna share the processes. So if you don't mind, I, I get, I understand what you're saying, I definitely understand what you're saying, but if we, if we're finished with Mr. Downham sharing the processes, does anybody else have a question for Mr. Downham about the process? I appreciate you, because I know some other people want to present about their boards as well, and I wanna give them an opportunity to do that. Next, we have the A and P Commission, Ms. Luther, and she's gonna share about those processes.
And one of my pet peeves is A and P. Oh, I'm sorry. One of my pet peeves is, is always saying, A and P. It's advertising and promotion, because a lot of people don't know that.
That's fine.
So that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
To come and talk about, about our processes. The, uh, Advertising and Promotion Commission was created in March of two thousand and three, uh, seven members, um, that's not really the process, do you want me to go through that part, or?
No.
Okay. But we do have African-American representation. The commission determines the use of the city advertising and promotion funds, which are based on a three percent tax levied on hotel and motel rooms. The mission is to increase tourism traffic, tourism traffic to the city, and grow hotel occupancy and revenues from tourism-related businesses, meetings, and event facilities and area attractions. The commission is tasked with using those revenues generated by the tax to enhance the cultural, recreational, and economic environment of the city, and to promote and advertise a positive image for El Dorado as an active, inclusive, welcoming, and prosperous city. The commission sets a budget every year based on our anticipated tax revenues. Now we get to the processes. Uh, groups that, um, are interested in hosting events in the city are able to come before the, uh, Advertising and Promotion Commission and request funds that they can use to advertise and promote their event. They cannot use them to put the event on, the funds are only for advertising and promotion. And their guidelines should target visitors from at least fifty miles from El Dorado, we're trying to bring people in that are already here. Uh, one of the objectives should be to attract visitors who will spend the night in lodging properties, though multi-day events are given higher priority. At least seventy-five percent of the funds from the commission should be used outside the fifty-mile radius of El Dorado. Up to twenty-five percent can be used to advertise and promote locally. And we did that because if we're not getting our own people to come out to events, then we're kind of, they have money to spend too. So, um, let's see. Forms, if you're, if you have an event coming up, and you are interested in, um, checking on some funds from the Advertising and Promotion Commission, you can request a form, uh, from the city clerk, Heather McFay, and I wanna stress, you need to request your funds as early as possible. If you're planning something, go ahead and get that form and get it filled out. Uh, we meet the first Wednesday of January, March, May, July, September, and November at one thirty PM here, and meetings are open to the public. So even if you're not hosting an event, but you wanna know more about the process, we would welcome you to come. The commission evaluates the funding request, and it's a pretty detailed, uh, form that you fill out, and we do request a budget for how you spend, if, if, we don't even look at your request if you don't attach a budget that shows how you will spend the money that we give you for advertising and promotion. We evaluate those requests, decide whether to fund the event and how much money to award, and like I said, priority is given to events that expect overnight visitors to the city and that, to, uh, the overall economic impact that the event will have. Uh, we do request that groups come back to us, uh, within ninety days of their event, and give us a report. We also budget to advertise and promote the city of El Dorado to attract meetings, leisure, and business travelers in order to stimulate the local economy. The commission works with the dominant agency to aggressively promote the area as a must-see destination. And I got a good idea earlier about the playscape. We might should look at some of the money that the commission spends to promote the city, we might should look at designating some of that to do a thing about the playscape. Some of the surrounding communities may not know we have that.
Right.
And it's a wonderful, trust me, for our size of town, it's a wonderful facility. Okay. You two gonna ask me questions?
Well, of course. I only, I only have a small question about the process, so I, I went before you guys before, and, um, and I was, I was awarded two thousand dollars, I got to do a concert, and everything turned well, we got, had a lot of people stay in hotel that night, it did well. Do you guys fund events that, that's per se? Like my friend, Michael Jackson, he, uh, one time, I think he, uh, A and P funded him an event that he wanted to do. He, he said he was gonna come, they paid for it upfront, the artists, or what helped him out, and then, um, is that, is that something y'all do?
We used to have a program, something to do with the auditorium, trying to promote using the auditorium, and.
Until we found out that it was against state statute.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Now, speaking about Michael Jackson, he's, y'all get, I'll make a comment about him, but I've actually visited with him recently, and, uh, he does bring in good crowds to his soul fest, and I said, you need to come see us.
See you too.
And one thing I will say is, um, we figured out several years ago that, um, it was a good idea to have groups who have recurring events, that know they're going to host something and would like to, to ask for funds, um, we try to have those all turned in to us in January, so we can look at everything, and, I mean, even if they're, if they're hosting something that's in October, we like to look at it all, weigh, you know, uh, where the best investment of the funds would be, and go ahead and line those things out. That, that helps us work with our budget, and it also helps the people who are requesting funds to know they're going to have funds to use.
That was, and not so much a question, but an observation, because I come to a lot of the meetings, and I know it's usually the same people every time, so I'm not sure, and that was, that was my thing, I wasn't sure if people really understood.
I'm not sure they do either, and I would like to suggest, I think having people come to talk about the process is a good thing, but I also think a series of articles maybe in the newspaper about commissions and boards, and what the process is, what the, what the board is and does, and what the process is. Because I do think there probably are groups out there who host, and they may be small events.
Right.
But that's okay, you, you know, you have to start somewhere. So if they, um, think that they're gonna try to host an event, then maybe they should look into, and we can't fund everything.
Right.
But we can look at it, so.
May I have an opportunity to speak on the tail end of your comments?
Yes.
Somehow, some way, I ended up being the treasurer, which, uh, I was married to a lovely lady that was a great accountant.
[laughing]
Some of it rubbed off, not much, but how, I, I can tell you that last year, we generated four hundred and eight thousand dollars with that three percent tax. This year, in light of the fact that we're coming out of the pandemic, our discussion This year, in light of the fact that we're coming out of the pandemic, our discussion was, we need to open the gates. We need to be a little more aggressive. In January, we set a budget to spend four hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the symphony, with MAD, with Main Street, with the DBA. You know, a host of people. And, and the bottom line is, is we don't, we, we're not in it to make money. We're in it to put money into the pipeline to where the people have ready dollars to advertise these events, to bring them downtown, to every store up and down Hillsborough, or, you know, any direction. We're looking just to bring people to town to spend their money. And, uh, the hotel, the hotels, if you didn't know it, about seventy percent of the hotel revenue comes from out-of-town guests. So, we're, uh, we're using other people's money to bring people to spend in our retail establishments, and to buy symphony tickets and MAD tickets, and, you know, spend money downtown around the square when we have music playing. Now, I've already spoke too much. Pardon me.
Okay.
Mr. McGee?
Ma'am, I, I don't, I don't have a question for you. Wonderful job. But I just want everybody to remember why we got these committees and commissions. When our citizens do come before these commissions or get on these agendas, it's a very intimidating process for you to stand down there, and you got ten people looking at you, uh, five people, or six people, or seven people, and you trying to articulate what the purpose why you up there, your program. I, I, we were at the municipal meeting, and they talked about soft skills.
Yeah.
How to communicate and be friendly. I, I think us on these commissions and the boards and the city council, we have to realize how intimidating it is for a person or citizen who might not even be a public speaker, or not used to coming in front of crowds. You got ten people up here looking at you. You got forty people behind you listening to you. You got the newspaper and radio, and we ought to be a little more understanding and compassionate when people come before us, so they'll feel welcome to come before us. They got to feel welcome. If they don't feel welcome...
That the Advertising and Promotion Commission is a pretty friendly group.
Yes, ma'am, but it's very, it's very, if they don't know you, it's still intimidating. And it's, that's, I think, what keep a lot of people from engaging into some of the programs that, uh, we offer, because they see how some of them get treated when they come to city council. So, they think, we have to, we have to be inviting for our people to come and express their dreams or visions, or their concerns or problems. We got to stop attacking when people come before us with an issue or with a proposal.
And, and that's not directed...
Oh, no. I'm standing there looking. Okay, I did not, I told them, "Let him talk." He checked the money.
I thank you so much. Thank you. Were there any other questions coming in?
No.
Okay.
It's a pretty simple process. It really is.
We just have to get people to come.
Educate people that, that it's there.
That's it. That's it. Thank you. Thank you. Before everyone leaves, because it seems like we're losing our audience. Let me, let me do this before everyone leaves. It's, it's down in the, uh, announcements, but can I have, uh, Mr. Brian Terry Welch to stand? I don't know how you all came in the building tonight, but if you came in on the stairs with the, with the black railing, you will see that now we are using our board for the highlights of the week. So, we have Mr. Brian Terry Welch as our hometown hero. If you come to any of the meetings, any of the meetings, you will see him in attendance. And so, I just wanted to showcase him. If you, when you walk around your way out, make sure you stop and see the board. He shares his bio and some of his pictures that he's posted. I just wanted to recognize him, and I do apologize that I didn't do it at the beginning of the meeting.
It's not an official meeting till the Wildcats in the house.
That's right.
Been nine years, and I go to every commission and board meeting, and I promise you, if he's not there, I'm worried something's wrong.
So, we thank you for all that you do, Mr. Welch, and I do apologize for not doing that first. Next, another meeting that he attends very faithfully, Parks and Playground. He even shared why he wasn't at the last meeting.
Hi, I'm Alexis Alexander, and I'm representing the Parks and Playground Commission. Uh, tonight, uh, we're a little different from the other two that have spoken to you already, because we don't have money to give away. We are the ones that are usually asking for those funds. Um, our commission does meet at noon on the fourth Tuesday of every month here in the council chambers. Um, so I would invite you to attend, and the audience to attend, to stay informed of the works that we're doing in this community. Um, if you can't make a meeting, we're all open to you reaching out to us. Anyone that serves on the commission to take the time to visit with you. So, this commission was also created by an ordinance in the sixties, I believe, and we are working now with the city attorney, because that ordinance is quite outdated, to, uh, probably have asked the council to, um, get rid of that ordinance, apply another one, and our bylaws that we're working on too, to update that, to make it a little more, um, up-to-date with what we're tasked to do. So, I just wanted to update you a little bit on some projects that we've been working on. Uh, some have even been completed, which, uh, ha- it's been a long time coming, so we're quite excited. Um, if you're not familiar, and I, I hope that you all are, so I'm more talking to the people behind me, that our city has eight parks. Maddox, McKinney, and Mosby that are in Ward Three. Mitchell, which is our puppy park, in Ward Two. Ward Three has Neal, Oakhurst, and Old City Park. And Ward One has Miller Park. And we also oversee the Lions Club Municipal Golf Course and the walking trail around that. We have worked with, um, El Dorado Works Board, and we have taken suggestions from previous town hall meetings, uh, with our citizens to make some plans, uh, for the parks in our area, uh, to include restrooms, grills, water fountains, and benches in most all of the parks. Most of them already have, uh, playground equipment and basketball courts. So, in the last year, despite COVID obstacles that we've had, and with support of the Works Board, and you, the council, and most of all, the, uh, Public, um, Works Department, we've accomplished several things that I wanted to brag a little bit about. So, and when I say "we," I mean mainly the public works guys did this. Uh, but we've been able to repave the walking trail at the Lions Club and the playgrounds, uh, widening, widening it, and fixing some of the eroded and rutted areas, so it's a lot smoother. Uh, we've been able to purchase equipment to improve the municipal golf course, which is not a money pit, and includes, uh, a sweeper, a mower, and several utility carts to clean out there. And, um, their numbers are just growing over the past several years. We've added charcoal barbecue grills to Neal, Maddox, Miller, Mosby, and Old City Parks. We've constructed a new basketball area adjacent to the golf course that has two courts. Um, in the next several weeks, a public restroom will be installed there. And in the area between the courts and the restroom that's coming, we'll have a water ta- a water fountain and a picnic table once that is all complete. Um, in the future, in working with the Works Board, we hope to, um, add more public restrooms at more of the parks. Um, we want to look at resurfacing the courts at Miller Park, um, adding lines for pickleball, which has become increasingly popular in our community, um, in addition to using them for tennis as well. Uh, we wanna add basketball courts at Neal Park, and we've even floated the idea of a community archery range at McKinney Park. Mr. McGee, you'll be glad to know that we're working with the South Arkansas Historical Preservation Society to place a memorial bench for Bart Reed along the walking trail, and that should be completed in the next several weeks, um, as well. So...
I, I think it's family, woman.
Yes, we're, we're working to make sure all that, um, they're invited and recognized and, and unveiling. Um, I know that many of you would like an update on where we are as a commission with the community water feature. So, as you know, COVID nineteen closed the pool at Maddox Park several years ago. In the meantime, we searched for someone who could work to repair that pool. But it was beyond repair. It was deemed unsafe, and it was a community health hazard. So, as most of you know, it was demolished last month. The commission is looking at several options, and I can tell you that, um, we do have a subcommittee that's working on that project. Um, in closing, I do wanna brag a little bit more about the staff that works, uh, under Robert, the Parks and Playground guys. They work hard to ensure the trash is picked up regularly at our parks, that the grass is mowed, the lights work. They paint and repair the facilities. When someone calls us and says there's graffiti at Miller Park, they were out there to immediately clean that up. We need lights. They fix the lights. So, um, we're really proud of the work that they do. Um, I would also tell you that we have a Facebook page, El Dorado Parks and Playground. Um, so you can like that on Facebook to keep up with what we're doing as well.
Can I ask a question real quick? You know, we have a large Hispanic group that love to play soccer. Do we have, um, a field at the one behind Miller Park Mall that's dedicated for the soccer? I know we was talking about trying to find them, uh, area when it actually...
Sure. So, um, we have talked about that before. That area behind the mall is not a city park. And to be honest with you, I don't know who owns that. Um, at one time, our committee talked about, um, the group that played soccer at Neal Park.
Right.
And talked about some needs that they may have out there. Um, we had trouble reaching out to find maybe who was in charge of that. They're not playing out there anymore. Um, we tried to reach out to Chris Nail that's on the complex board to see where that group had gone. 'Cause at one point, we even talked about putting soccer goals up at, um, McKinney Park, because there's really not anything out there. But we haven't had anybody approach us with that want. And so, if there is a need that someone has, we would be more than happy to listen to what their need is. But otherwise, we haven't really been able to nail down a contact for that group that was playing regularly.
I, I'm not gonna help you with that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, just to piggyback, when I was in Springdale, uh, two weekends ago, up there refereeing, and I, and as I was leaving, I looked, they had this big, nice facility, more recreational, but they had sectioned off a, uh, area for the, for the, um, for the soccer individuals. And as I was walking by, I was looking at, of course, and I'm always thinking about El Dorado, I'm like, wow. I was just so impressed with how much fun they were having, and how they had, how their city had made sure that that demographic had somewhere to, to exercise their culture. And I was just like, really thinking that, what can we do in our town, you know, to serve that particular demographic? I just, I just think that'd be awesome.
And I think, and I, I may speak out of turn, but I think that I've understood, uh, members of the complex board to say that you can call ahead and play out there.
Yeah, once the complex is finished and the soccer fields are built out there and completed, and I think they'll be out there, being able to use them. And once the league is more organized, I'm, you know, pretty in touch with the lady that does run the league. And once it's, uh, I guess, they get all their stuff in a row, they'll be using that out there with, you know, whatever they have to do to be able to use it.
Get your word out.
It's out. It's out. There's just, they're just waiting nowhere to use, and, and when they could use it. They're just waiting on completion of fields.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I do wanna apologize for stepping out a few minutes ago. It wasn't because of your presentation.
Great job.
Thank you. Next is not a board, but also something that I wanted people to understand the process, is the municipal auditorium. Mr. White, do you mind coming up? I know that's not like the parks, because you can't rent the parks, but you can rent the auditorium, and it's, it's another part of our city that I'm not sure people understand what the process is. So, if you could share a little bit about that process so that people will know.
Yeah. When you rent an auditorium, give me a call. You might call the mayor's office. You might call Public Works. They'll give you my number. You call me. I look on there, and I find the date. We'll go, uh, email for a personal, um, or physical contract, sign the contract, got it, turn it in the paper, and that's how you go, uh, that contract and get the auditorium rent.
'Cause I know that we do have, and I know that the auditorium, we have a lot of other venues, but I know that this is a city venue, and we wanna be able to utilize this as much as we can, because, of course, it's a city venue. I just wanted to make sure that people understood what that process is, because I, I even heard it mentioned at the forum the other night about the scheduling. And I know that's been something that's been talked about quite a bit. Uh, is there any way, and I'm not sure if this is something that we can do as far as the city page, or since we don't have our own actual website, maybe with the, the chamber, I'm not sure. If there's any way that we can get that calendar put out so that people will know ahead of time what those dates are? I heard it even mentioned at the, the forum the other night about people don't know where those dates are, where it's been scheduled. So, that may be something that we work on to make sure that people know.
Talk with Caitlin, and, uh, we were gonna...
She's right there. Good deal. I think that'll be beneficial. I know that when you came before, you had some, some things that you wanted to do, and I know it's much like the parks in that respect, about some renovations. I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, if anybody wanted to kinda give an update, Mr. Cho, about the committee that was formed. I know you all met today. Was there anything?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I hate that you, uh, had to leave early, because we really got to the meeting in matter after you left the building.
I had to go to ribbon cut.
Yeah, yeah. But, uh, bottom, bottom line is, is we've got two gentlemen that are quite adept in, uh, doing some research for us, and, uh, eh, eh, I can just tell Mr. Downham, the way it looks, we're probably gonna come see you too. But, uh, I can, I can, I can tell you, and, uh, that, that auditorium i- is a, is a great facility. I mean, it, it really is. I mean, the, the, the remodel, uh, but lights and sound are, like many other things, they have expiration dates. And we have exceeded expiration dates in many cases. Uh, and our meeting went very well, and, uh, I think you're gonna be hearing more. Uh, it's just a matter, it's a matter now, we've got a plan. We have to work our plan.
Good deal. Good deal. I also want to commend you...
Is that about right, Mr. White?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanna commend you for doing an excellent job. Thank you so much.
Good job, Mike.
Next on our agenda, and I, I'm not sure that there is a report, but I know that we have it. The finance committee hadn't met since the tenth. Did you wanna kinda give us an update?
I do. Um, what, what we've been doing, oh, I can tell you that, uh, the revenues are up, uh, at the same time last year compared to last year. We are, uh, in the process of making some repairs to some of the, uh, things that, uh, mostly dealt with El Dorado Works Board and the old EEDP tax. Uh, Mr. Downham and Mr. Edmonds have been working with, uh, Immigrant Scruggins to, to make those things right. There's about four more, uh, four or five more line items. There was an email that went out today. If you guys haven't seen that, uh, please, uh, respond, uh, because we're, we're, once we get that done, we're gonna close, close last year out completely, and that will be that. And at that time, I will call a, a finance meeting and, and go from there. Uh, we can look at, I, I already talked to some department heads, uh, of course, you may have noticed gasoline has gone up, and so there'll probably be some, um, major adjustments.
Yeah, a little bit.
I'm gonna cut off right now. But you, uh, so there'll be, will be some major adjustments to, to make repairs for that and everything. But that's, that's not what I know right now. But it is, uh, in a good state right now, for sure.
Good deal. So, is everybody up to speed? I know you're the finance chair, but is everybody up to speed on, on what's going on as far as finances are concerned? Now, we haven't met, but you keeping everybody informed about?
Well, I'm just, I'm mostly, mostly just waiting to, to do that, so we can have it all closed out and all repaired. And I really think our books will be in the best shape they've been in, in a number of years, when that's processed and completed.
So, hopefully, before the next council meeting, we can have a meeting.
That, they're not in their head, so...
Okay, good deal. Good deal. All right. Next, and this, I had it on here, and I should've explained it a little bit more. The food truck ordinance that I know has come before the council already. There were just two, I would say grammatical problems with it. Um, one was that it said in, on the second page, number ten, for the nonprofits, that they would go to the city collector concerning, instead of concerning, a business license. And it also, the verbiage makes it sound like the nonprofit would get a letter of exemption from the city collector instead of giving the city collector a letter of exemption to prove that they were, they were a nonprofit. So, I shared that information with, with our city attorney, and, um, he said that the corrections could be made. But I wanted to make sure that we brought it before the council, before those corrections are made, so that we could bring it back so that you all will know, because consulting with our city clerk, she was sharing that any changes that are made, you all need to be made aware of those as well. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware. We, we weren't changing anything major, but just making sure that that verbiage was clear, and that that grammatical change needed to be made as far as the spelling. Do we need to do any kind of vote or anything on that?
I would feel better.
Okay. You're the...
Could we wait until it's finished and see if it votes?
But it's really an amendment to that ordinance.
Okay.
So, that, that really is...
So, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
Well, I mean, the Arkansas legislature, uh, I mean, their, their laws are, the, the grammar's cleaned up all the time without having to go back, so...
Oh, it sounds fair, like it's just spelling cor...
Oh, it sounds good, like it's just a spelling correction.
That's correct.
It's a spelling correction and the understanding of it, because of the wording, it makes it sound like you'll get something from the collector that you should actually be giving.
Not everyone knows the collector doesn't hand out exemptions from various-
Not everybody.
And that's why I said I didn't think that needed to be changed without everybody.
Yes.
Because we've already passed that ordinance out to multiple people and posted it everywhere.
Right.
Okay.
So do we need to do it as an amendment? Do we, do we need to, so what do we need to do? Do we need to vote on those changes? Do we need to? I just want to make sure we do it correctly. You had your hand raised, did you?
I had one other thing that was brought up when I was applying to the fire marshal. There's a twenty pound fire steward who's rotation in there.
Okay.
And that's from the fire marshal, said that it should be two.
Oh, instead of twenty, it should be two. That's a big difference. So that's another thing that we need to change. Okay. Thank you. So those three things, for sure. So again, do we need to vote on that? Is that, I'm asking, is it? It's the attorney, I thought it needed to be done, but-
We can have a oral vote on it, but go ahead and do it.
Yeah, I make a motion that we make those corrections, placement file, and place it on the webpage that these things have been taken care of, and on our web, our face chat or whatever they call that thing.
I stuck to that.
Madam Clerk. All except for the face chat.
You get all that, that thing.
Okay.
Andre Ruck.
Hi.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Michael Rice.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Alva Vartanian.
Aye.
Paul Choate.
Aye.
And Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Michael Rice.
Aye.
Alva Vartanian.
Aye.
Andre Ruck.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
And Judy Ward.
Aye.
Is Devon Patterson here?
Yes.
Okay. You want to stand and be? Yeah, that was-
I'll be quick.
Okay.
Really quick, love the passion that everyone, I'm not a public speaker, so the passion that's to bring, I'll have to bring to the, to the planning and zoning, so looking forward to working with the service and working with the council.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I think you're the first person that's ever come up to say anything after being appointed. Felt good tonight, huh? Next on our agenda, and the way it's put on here may be a little misleading, it's about paying the bills weekly. I know when we decided to go to one, when you all decided to go to one meeting a month, it was with the purview that you could pay bills weekly by email. Well, we found out that that's not legal to do, so I've been talking with the municipal league about what we need to do to be able to pay bills, because I'm sure many of you understand that if we're not meeting to be able to approve bills, that bills are going overdue being paid. It's almost impossible to be able to pay bills once a month. So I don't know what you all would decide to do. I do have some information that I got from Mr. Richmond that he copied Mr. Wilkinson on. I got it, I didn't see it until after. We got in here, forgive me for bringing my phone in, I was looking for it, so I can share that with you. I know he mentions in the email that as far as that ordinance that's been put in place, you might consider changing the amount on there, or there's some different things that you can do, but Mr. Williamson, I saw that you had your hand up.
Well, I was going to say, the council actually, I'm sorry, I've been-
Yeah, you need to stay close to the money.
We're getting lengthy tonight.
It's one meeting a month, we got to get it all in, I'm sorry.
When we pass the budget every year, the council has given approval for those funds to be spent in that budget. So what we're doing, when we approve the bills each month, is generally that's in, a lot of times even in our readers, after that service has been done, and even after it has been paid for. But it does keep the council abreast of any expenditures over $2,000, so we can all know what's taking place.
Okay.
I know you mentioned the ordinance, and there may be, we could change the wording on that ordinance so it doesn't conflict with that, but state law allows us to operate and pay bills without that, because of the budget, we do approve the budget.
When you say without that, are you meaning without, you are actually approving the bills at the meeting?
Correct. They have been approved. I mean, the budgets for each department are approved when we vote on the budget each year. So those monies have been approved by this council to spend.
Right.
And so as long as it fits within the budget, we can, you can pay those bills. The council just needs to be kept abreast of those, any expenditures over $2,000, and we approve them generally in our readers.
So what you're saying is, the ordinance that says that anything over $2,000 needs to be approved by council, is that that's actually not the case?
I'm just, I'm, it's kind of conflicts with state statute. I think, well, actually-
State statute rules over city ordinance.
That's correct. That's what I'm saying, we, just like you said, I think we do ought to make some changes in that ordinance, the wording on some of that.
Okay. So I will share the email that was sent out, and with the email, with the ordinance again, and whatever we need to do, because meeting once a month, of course, is, I know that was one of the things that was discussed about being able to pay our vendors, and we don't want that to be any more of an issue than it's been. And I also want to mention, even about that, that I wanted to be clear with the way the bills are, the way the bills are being paid, and I'm glad that you bring that up about the budget and all of that, we don't want people to feel like we're just not paying bills, and I know it's come up a couple of times before about that, so that's also a process that I'm not sure everybody understands. Mr. Kinslow?
Yes.
And I don't think we put all of the wording on this particular ordinance, but it's about the 911 dispatch?
Yes, that's correct. I was handed it at county judge's office, they're going to pass it at their meeting this month, and I just made some changes so it be the city instead of the county. An ordinance approving the interlocal cooperation agreement with Union County regarding a 911 center to serve Union County, whereas Union County Court authorized establishment obstruction of a new 911 center with grant funds provided under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, and whereas Union County Judge had proposed an interlocal cooperation agreement to the union and city of El Rey, Arkansas, providing for the joint operation of the new 911 center, and whereas the mayor of the city of El Rey has agreed to propose an interlocal cooperation agreement describing the form attached to this ordinance in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated 1414910. Now, there will be an order made by city council of El Rey, Arkansas, that city council approves the interlocal cooperation agreement with Union County Judge to execute the agreement and submit the same to Arkansas Attorney General, provided in Arkansas Code annotated 1414910. From an effective date, the interlocal corporation agreement, the new 911 center shall be established and operated subject to the terms of the agreement until terminated as therein provided, and as the efficient provision of 911 emergency services urgently needed for the protection of health, safety, and welfare of the public, emergencies found to exist, the ordinance shall be in full force and effect from an effective passage.
I know we suspend the rules and put the ordinance on second reading.
Second.
Andre Ruck.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Michael Rice.
Aye.
Alva Vartanian.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
And Paul Choate.
Aye.
Andre Ruck.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is to waive competitive bidding ordinance. I think that's you again, Mr. Kinslow.
Yeah, an ordinance waiving the requirements of competitive bidding with emergency clause, whereas from time to time necessary, the city of El Rey to waive the competitive bidding process, whereas ACA 1458303B2B, state city of El Rey may waive the bidding process at certain times, as long as the ordinance is passed, committing, whereas residents in West Main area have had complaints of not being able to hear the emergency storm warning sirens, and whereas we're into a severe weather season, the season, even other storm warning siren for the West Main area to keep all residents safe, and whereas LA Electric Company is the only authorized source for the Century Model 14VB storm warning siren in the state of Arkansas, now therefore, we are made by city council of El Rey, Arkansas, to be defeated, and hereby waive an order from Public Works Department to purchase a Century Model 14VB storm warning siren from the LA Electric Company for a total amount of $31,950. El Rey city council is determined the emergency exists, and the media, the option enforcement is a ordinance being necessary for the public peace, health, and safety and welfare of the region, shall be in full force and effect from an effective passage.
I made suspend the rules and put the ordinance on second reading by title only. Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Michael Rice.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Andre Ruck.
Aye.
Paul Choate.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is to waive competitive bidding ordinance. I think that's you again, Mr. Kinslow.
Yeah, an ordinance waiving the requirements of competitive bidding with an emergency clause, whereas from time to time necessary, the city of El Rey to waive the competitive bidding process, whereas ACA 1458303B2B, state city of El Rey may waive the bidding process at certain times, as long as the ordinance is passed, committing, whereas residents in West Main area have had complaints of not being able to hear the emergency storm warning sirens, and whereas we're into a severe weather season, the season, even other storm warning siren for the West Main area to keep all residents safe, and whereas LA Electric Company is the only authorized source for the Century Model 14VB storm warning siren in the state of Arkansas, now therefore, we are made by city council of El Rey, Arkansas, to be defeated, and hereby waive an order from Public Works Department to purchase a Century Model 14VB storm warning siren from the LA Electric Company for a total amount of $31,950. El Rey city council is determined the emergency exists, and the media, the option enforcement is a ordinance being necessary for the public peace, health, and safety and welfare of the region, shall be in full force and effect from an effective passage.
I made suspend the rules and put it on the third reading.
Second.
Michael Rice.
Aye.
Alva Vartanian.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Andre Ruck.
Aye.
Paul Choate.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Aye.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of competitive bidding with an emergency clause.
Final passage?
Second.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Andre Ruck.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Paul Choate.
Aye.
Michael Rice.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Andre Ruck.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Aye.
I just have one announcement, I know it's been mentioned about trash on tonight and making our city beautiful. I know that we had tried to plan some citywide cleanups before the holidays, but we know that this weekend is Easter weekend, so tomorrow's Good Friday, we will be closed. So we are proposing to do a citywide cleanup on April the 23rd. I know Mr. McGee has been organizing this, I'm not sure, Mr. Edmonds, if he's spoken to you about the city doing what they've done before as far as putting the dumpster in each ward and helping with trash bags or things, anything of that nature, but if that's-
We have talked, we have, we talked, but he talked so many days.
You may have forgotten. So we want to, we want to make that available for everybody to be able to get out and clean up and do that on the 23rd, and since this is the only meeting that we'll have this month, we'll put out more information about that, and maybe a flyer so that people will be aware.
Can I add something to that?
Yes.
You said that city hall will be closed tomorrow, but I wanted to also announce that I was told today that the recycling drop-off area, they're going to be open tomorrow, even though the rest of the city offices are closed. They'll be open, but they'll observe the holiday on Saturday, so they'll be closed on Saturday, but open tomorrow.